All right, it is 5:45, so go ahead and get started. Mayor Protem is going to be online for the formal meeting, but isn't going to make the update. David had a family emergency, he's not going to be here either, and everybody else is here, so we'll get going. Any questions about the update agenda? All right, how about the formal agenda? I want to confirm just who I've got covering all of the different items. Item four will be Roberta tonight. It's the land acknowledgements. I need someone for item seven A. That's appreciation for Shane Brown now on his retirement. Yes. All right, seven B, I have Karen. That is the Home Rule Municipality Litigation Support. And then we have several items. Thirteen A, B, and C are all one grouping in order to do the post-employment health plan. I have you for D as well.
Yep.
You want to do A, B, and C?
So all the same?
It is.
Sure.
And then we have E, which is the dissolution of Lamberton Lakes Metro District. And then F is administrative review for Confluence, that's in Ward four. Chris, you want it? And G is amending rules of order. Cherish, I think you brought this one forward, do you want it? Moving public comments? And you'll just read the title, you don't have to read the whole thing. All right, so we'll move on to the next part of the agenda, before we move to the briefings. Andy, do you have anything, or Tammy?
We have two quick items. First, you all did get a note from the clerk about the Liquor Licensing Authority recommendation and the Environmental Sustainability Task Force recommendations. So the LLA was recommending that the council consider Tracy Crispin for that role, and then the Sustainable Sustainability Task Force was recommending that you consider Eric Flores for that. So ultimately, I think the way your process, if there's affirmation, that there's support for those recommendations, that'll just come to you straight at a council meeting. Otherwise, you can give direction to proceed in a different way and consider that against yourself.
Any objections? All right, we'll bring it forward.
Is Tracy on any other reports?
If I recall, she had initially applied for another. We did share that there had been prior discussion about the council about people identifying their preference, and I believe that she was...
Sustainability.
And so her preference, the preference is the sustainability.
But it's just like a temporary thing, right? So it's not...
We had the same conversation about Peter. He wanted to be on that and the Tashco, and he chose Tashco instead. I do know, though, on the other side of it, we haven't had anyone else apply in Ward one. Do we want to hold that one open for a couple more weeks, just in case, and then come back to it? I just want to make sure we're consistent, is the only...
Yeah, so again, the preference she's stated, if she could only be on one, would be that she would continue to serve on the Sustainability Task Force.
Was there any other applicants?
No.
No other applicants.
We had the same issue again, though, with Ward three, we only had the one applicant, and we ended up folding it open for a little bit longer to see if we could get somebody else. And then if nobody else applies, then we can bring it back into discuss?
Yep.
Two weeks, I'm good?
Sure.
Okay, if that's helpful. And then, just a quick announcement. We have, I've spoken with the ward council members, but did want to apprise other council members. And you know, sometimes other council members attend community meetings. We do have the ward for community meeting this Thursday. We have anticipated, we do have an active case on a zoning case in that area that is of high interest to the community. As you all know, given the quasi-judicial process, we want to avoid ex parte communication between council members and parties in that case. We have asked the applicant to attend that meeting on Thursday. We'll have planning staff, we'll have those, both the applicant and planning staff in a sort of an adjacent room. And so if you end up at that meeting, like somebody that wants to talk about that piece, if you can, you or Roba, the staff will help make sure they get connected to the appropriate resources in that other room. We just want to try to preserve the integrity of the process the best as we can.
So just to make sure we're all on the same page, what is the name of the project? Just so that in case someone comes up to us and says, hey, this project, that we all know what we're talking about?
It is the Maker Project at 128.
Is it called Maker, though, or is it called something else?
You know, my god, it is technically called. But we will get you the technical...
Thank you, because they'll come up and ask specifics.
Yeah, they'll say it's York or...
Yeah. I guess we can even say, is it, this is the project 128, that the answer is yes, we can leave them. Is this going to be inside or outside this community event? Because it's supposed to be 100 degrees.
It is both. Brett, can you?
Both ends.
Both ends, sorry, Brett, can you...
The infrastructure building, how do you do indoor-out?
Yeah, but it's really hot. Last year it was miserably hot.
Pets in some shade.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be similar, so it's back there in the infrastructure building, within the meter shop. We'll open up both sets of doors, even though we're primarily going to be on the north side, on the shady side, and that usually lets the breeze go through the facility. So during the 100 degrees, it'll still be warm, but usually there's a pretty good breeze across current through there.
As long as we have extra water.
We'll work to see if there's any other accommodation we can make for cooling, too.
I do have an answer.
Okay, great.
It's called 1128.
They're going to say Maker House.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you. Nothing from me tonight.
All right, we'll jump into briefing. So first is the discussion regarding initiative referendum petition signatures and vacancies and such.
So this is our third update on these proposed charter amendments. Trying to start here tonight with the initiative and referendum provision and a potential change to the charter requirements on that, because council requested additional information on that one. So again, we're going to go through all of the proposed charter amendments and take your questions. And then if we're ready, we can schedule those on first reading, the ones that council directs us to. So, okay, I am going to have to look at this on my screen, that's quite a ways away from me. This first slide here on the initiative and referendum process summarizes what we've been able to find out about what other cities and towns do in Colorado. This is with regard to our charter's provision on initiatives and referendums, which indicate that any initiative or referendum petition, so an initiative is something, a law that our citizens may generate and want to put on the ballot. And then a referendum is when an existing law is referred to the voters to be repealed. And our requirements in our charter currently are that the petitions for either of these have to be signed by registered electors of the city, numbering not less than 10% of the number of persons who were registered electors of the city as of the date of the last regular city election. And then all signatures on the petition shall be obtained within 21 days before the date of filing that petition with the city clerk. So that's our current requirement. And what we've been able to find out, this first slide is information from the Colorado Municipal League. This is 2017 information that I believe is currently being updated. But we've tried to locate any changes that have been made, so it's still fairly accurate. And so for initiatives, that's, those are laws that citizens bring forward. The required signatures, you can see there, range from less than 5% to 40%, and most of them fall around the 10% to 15% range of the number of signatures. And they do, we don't differentiate in our charter, but some charters differentiate in the percent of signatures needed for special elections. So our charter does allow council to refer these issues to a special election, but does not have differing requirements for the number of signatures. So you can see that a minimal amount of cities and towns have differing percent requirements for a special election. And then on the bottom there, the third section is the days to collect signatures. Again, ours provides for 21 days before the date of filing the petition. And you can see that a lot give up to 90 days, some give 30 days, and those are probably the two main categories there, what we see in other cities and towns. And I want to move on here to the referendum. And so for referendums, referred measures are, referendums are repealing current code provisions. The required signatures range from less than 5% in some cities and towns up to 40%, with most of those landing at 10%. And then the days to collect signatures, again, range from 30 to 90, which most of those lie at 30 for referendums.
You said 21 days for Thornton, and what was the percent again?
10%. And then we did some additional research on comparable municipalities. So this is current as of today, of 2025. And so you can see between Lakewood, Centennial, Loveland, Longmont, Vada, Northland, Westminster, Boulder, Fort Collins, Greeley, Brookfield, and Wheat Ridge, for initiatives, the percent of voters range from 5% to 15. And then the number of days range from, what, 21 to 180. And then for those cities for referred measures, repealing code, the percent of voters range from 3% to 10%, and the number of days ranges from 21, again, to 30 there. There may be a lesser number of days, including for referendums, because these are laws that are already on the books. So you would need some clarity as to whether or not, you know, those are coming off the books. And because we would be currently relying on those laws. Not sure on that, but I thought, okay. And then for initiative and referendums, here are the most recent charter amendments we could find. Our VADA in 2021 increased the time to gather signatures for both initiatives and referendums from 30 days to 60 days. Boulder in 2018 changed their signature requirement from 5% to signature required for a general election and 15% for special election to 10% for either election. So they had 5% for general election and 15 for special, and they changed it to 10% for both. And then Denver is one we talked about last time, when we were discussing charter amendments in 2018. They changed their signature requirement from 5% of the number of voters in the last mayoral election to 2% of active registered electors as of January 1 in odd number of years. And so that change actually increased the number of registered elections, that electors that you would have to have sign a petition to 8,000 from about 4,700. So those were the recent ones. So again, here is our language up on the screen now. And that's your current charter. And that's what you would be changing. We'd also have to change one other section that, to conform to this, too, which is 8.16, and it directs the city clerk. And you would want the numbers to be the same in this other section. So we would, the charter amendment would amend both 8.13 and 8.16 once we decide on what the change might be. This is also one, you can see there's quite a bit of information to consider that might be appropriate for a charter committee. Or obviously, if council wants to recommend some changes now, we can put that forward. So maybe some feedback on this one? Or do you want me to continue on the other?
Roberta?
Thank you for the work on this, because it does help, like, kind of look at, like, comparable cities. And I think, like, I'm leaning still towards going with the lower numbers, because while I am slightly concerned that it could get out of, like, you know, people, somebody, special interest group could create some sort of committee and do some really weird laws or something. I think that happens more on a state level than it does on a local city level. And I don't see, like, obviously, there never really been that much action around this. Um, I, I think our group was, like, the first in forever to do it, so...
Oh, no, there were several before that failed as well.
Oh, there was, I know the other one, yeah, I know one other one.
The marijuana one failed.
Was there a marijuana one? But I was thinking about the age for running for office.
Oh, that one, too?
Yeah.
Yep, so that's three within my term here, so...
So do we remember why they failed?
They couldn't get the signatures.
Yeah. I mean, yeah. And all it does is put it to a vote.
Yeah, it puts it on the ballot, yeah.
Um, hasn't been that many, though. I mean, it's probably not been, like, tons in comparison to, like, Denver or...
Yet, hasn't been done yet.
I just don't know that it would be a huge issue here. So I would, I, if I'm going to put, like, a recommendation out there myself, I would say 5% for the initiative. Like, if we go more in alignment with Lakewood and those numbers.
So Thornton's 10% as of the 2023 regular election was 8,800, and 5% would be 4,400. So that's the difference.
Yeah. But they have 180 days. So...
Right, and you could change one or the other of these numbers, too, it's, or both, yeah, it's up to you.
I mean, definitely the 21 days is ridiculous.
And again, I need to point that out, as you can see from the language. So for the initiative, it's 21 days, and for the referendum, it's 30 days.
Yeah.
Right, to have the petition submitted after the effective date of the ordinance, which they're trying to repeal, so they give 30 days there.
Yeah, I personally would like to see it more in alignment with Lakewood of five. And I mean, even if we went to 90 days, maybe not 180?
60 days?
I'd be willing, yeah, it's better than 20, anything better than 21. 21 is just the weirdest number, and it's ridiculous, and it's not even attainable.
Right, and so you could make initiative and referendum consistent in the number of days you give them, or you could change both of those days to something else. Right now, initiative's 21 and referendum's 30.
Yeah, I think leaves a 30. What's, is it the same number for the number of voters?
And, yeah, the number is the same for both in ours, but some charters differentiate that, too.
Yeah, I would say 30, and then 90, and then five. From the bottom, five.
So 5% of the number of persons who were registered electors, and then the 90 for the, for an initiative, being the number of days you have to file with the city clerk, yeah. So all the signatures have to be obtained within 90 days on an initiative, under that scenario. And we leave 30 alone under your suggestion.
All right, I have Jessica, Karen, and Cherish.
I'm just gonna say, the only thing that worries me about lowering the threshold is what we saw in Lakewood with the growth. And so I think that caused a lot of problems. So I wouldn't want that to be something that we saw when we have areas now that are specifically designated for growth and housing. So I don't, I'm not opposed to the increasing the number of days, but it does worry me with lowering the percentage. I just don't want to end up with something where we do have special interest groups coming in. We know that there's plenty of no-growth desire and complaining in the city from residents that don't want anything. So all it takes is one group to come in with money, and that's going to have signature signed. Like, I think a lot of people would sign up something for that. So I'm, I'm not, I don't like the idea of changing that. I would rather just change the number of days, I guess.
Do you have a suggestion on these?
I like the, like, Westminster, 180 and 30. Northland is the same, and Boulder is the same. Centennial.
So change the number.
So it's 10%, but 180 and 30.
Yeah, I would be all right with that, I think.
Okay, Karen?
I'm, so just so you know, I didn't press my button, and I'm wondering if it was actually Chris.
Chris didn't press his button, either.
Okay, sorry, I just, I actually just got on, so hello.
All right, Justin?
I think that these, you know, for something to get on the ballot, I would like to see a significant number of people in support of it. So I do think currently, it's just the way the rules are designed, it's not, and the way the city has grown, it's not really feasible to collect all those signatures. But I do think that 10% is not unreasonable if they have enough days to collect those signatures. And to me, if 10% of the electorate were to sign something, that would be very meaningful. I think it'd be much more meaningful than 5%. And I would like to give people a reasonable chance to have those signatures. So I would be open to increasing that from 21 to the average of these, where we have numbers here. So if you average all the numbers, there's nine of them, comes out to 93. So I think a 90-day limit does give, I think, a reasonable chance for an organized group to, you know, see if this is being supported by the city or not, get it on the ballot. You know, I think 90 could potentially, and maybe, maybe the average is skewed by the, the shorter ones, so maybe we could go up a little bit higher than that if council agrees. But I, I know, I think that we need to have a higher threshold than 5% in order to get something on the ballot, just to really give us a stronger signal that, you know, this is something that a good chunk of active voters are interested in doing.
Roberta?
It seems like a lot of cities are following a different, like, a state law here, is that correct?
If, if it is not in our charter, they have to follow state law on this requirement. If there's not direction on the number of days.
So I just think we should probably stick with that at 180 days.
Or they called it out as this is the state.
Yeah, I think that sounds like, you know, just in the spirit of our state being one of the few states where you can actually do this, I think we should go with the state law. Having organized one of these drives, it's just 8,000 signatures. It's especially in Thornton with the, as much of a bedroom community as we are, it's very difficult. You have to catch people at home. You know, you can't, at some point, go to these, like, concerts in the park and stuff like that, but you're not, you don't have a huge, a huge mass chunk of the population of those. It's pretty, even though we do get good attendance at them, it's, it's pretty difficult to get signatures, even at something like Thornton Fest. So I'm, I'm going to stick pretty hard to 180 days, if we're going to go stick at 10.
All right, I'm trying to keep conscious of the time, because we have an executive session tonight that may take some time, so I want to, you'll have to come back after the meeting if we don't finish, assuming everybody's available. Other comments on percentage or days? Anyone who hasn't spoken, Chris?
I'm comfortable if the percentage is higher to represent more of the residents along their time. I feel like six months is a lot. No one's floated, maybe splitting the difference between 90 and making it 90 and 180 and doing something like 120? Because I do agree it is a lot of signatures. So if anyone, no one's said 120, but...
Doesn't help the conversation, because there's a new option.
New option, but you're thinking with that, with 10%? And then keeping the referendum at 30 days?
Yes.
Cherish?
I agree with Justin, I think, and Chris, I think that we should leave the 10% there, and if we can agree on just time.
So...
I'm good with the 90 or the 120, I don't care, either way.
Yeah.
Okay, so he was 120.
120? Okay, so I'm hearing 10%, any objection to 10%? I'm hearing 120 now, any objection to 120 days? And then on the referendum, leaving it at 30 days and 10%?
Yep.
Okay, so the only change would be that to 120 days.
Got it. Thank you. All right, let's go on here to our next one. This is on vacancy. Council had requested we look into changing the word incapacitated. And then there had been some discussion about the phrase "for more than three months." Because of the competent evidence requirement in there, I think we are not recommending any changes legally. Incapacitation is a term that we found 400 times in state statute and a bunch of definitions of it. Arguably, and then you can see what you've done in your code there. We, for our, your council code of conduct, you indicated it had to be an immediate family member's serious health condition, which is a term apart from the Family Medical Leave Act, to be deemed excused. So I just wanted to put that forward again. But incapacitated really seems to us, after reading through everything, as a bit of a broader term. Sometimes an adult guardian can be appointed for somebody. Whether that's due to medical reasons or not, you may not know, but you may have competent evidence that there is some kind of incapacitation, which you can derive from a public record. So we thought, just leave the broader term incapacitated, knowing that to prove that up and to have a vacancy, you have to have competent evidence of some kind, whether that be medical, which people may not offer, or some kind of ruling on, again, incapacitation that we find. So we're, legal's recommending no change there, but if you wanted any changes to that, we could certainly consider that.
Any objection to the recommendation? All right, hearing none, we can move on to the next one.
Okay. And, oh, also, this just is in support of that. We found a number of communities that have had that incapacitation provision in there since the charter was adopted, and have not really made an effort to change that word either. So that was that. We won't change that. Okay, this is just what we talked about last time, this is the language. So, but we would have a special election to be held within 120 days of a vacancy if there was a year or more left on the mayor's term when it was vacated. But we, the Mayor Protem would fill the position if there was less than a year on the term left to be filled. And that's consistent with the charter on, on the Mayor Protem, that second part there. So this would be the proposed ballot language for, for that. Special election, if more than a year on the vacancy for the mayor. And if less than a year, again, the Mayor Protem would just fill that seat. I think that's what we had consensus on, but I wanted you to see this. Okay, partial terms. Yes, again, we are clarifying, since the state of the law, as discussed last time, is a bit up in the air, that a partial term for the provisions in the Constitution on term limits is one year or less does not constitute a term. So if you fill a vacancy for less than a year, it does not count against your term limit limitations in the Constitution. Any questions on that one?
Sorry. Go ahead, Justin.
So that that's. That term in office begins when the. When that that person, a new person takes the seat, not when the vacancy.
Yes, yes.
So I just have a question for the group. I did watch the meeting from last week, so what what is the one year? I mean, I I guess what I heard was to make it consistent with the vacancy discussion. But to me, serving one year of a term or isn't actually enough, I would say two years would make it a partial term. I just wanna understand the one year versus more for a partial term.
Believe it was the consistency for what we did and what the voters chose.
Would there be heartburn in looking at two years? Do you wanna keep it one year?
Again, you can define this partial term any way you want, but the point is to define it so that we. Yeah, the point is to define it so we know if it counts as a term or not, but the time is is up to you. And Councilmember Martinez, I would say it is when the the person takes the position because a partial term of office served. By a council member or mayor is what they're counting, so you have to actually be sworn in to serve.
Jessica?
I guess I would, so the the vacancy though is after anything. Longer than one year is a special election, right?
Anything longer than one year will be counted then under this as a term, a term. For purposes of term limits, so if you serve three years in a vacated position, that's.
That counts, counts as a term.
It's a term.
So if it's eighteen months.
That's a term.
So what our current vacancy is is if it's under two years, we have a special election, right?
No, or anything over a year, there's more than a year left in the term, they have a special.
So we're saying anything more than the term, if it's more than a year, everything that counts as one full. So if it's thirteen months, it counts as a full term.
It does.
That just seems kind of. Sad because then that also means that that person will never have the opportunity to. Serve in any positions that might be executive level, if you're, if you go to CML, if you're gonna try to do Dr. Cog. You're never gonna get there if you're only gonna be serving. Four years and then thirteen months as a full term, I I just think. It does limit that person. And then they're not allowed to run, I would be more in line with the two years or anything, I mean. It just seems like it's a very short amount of time, so that would be six or five total years that you could serve, that would count as two terms if you were. In that position. I mean, that's not much.
Is that different than six years?
Six years at least gives you some opportunity to move your way up if you go quick.
Others, I wasn't part of the discussion last week, so I'm just trying to understand what I heard. Two weeks ago, Roberta?
And the the main concern I had was like if somebody. Didn't serve, or if somebody serves. Like for three years or, you know, it it was more on the longer end, so like. They serve two full terms, plus they'd been there, they could be there for a super long time. And I don't think that's like the intent of, like our term limits is to have somebody get appointed and serve like. You know, three and a half years and then get another four years and get another four years.
So two years might solve that if that's only. Just for the short end of it. At least it's closer aligned with what.
While you're thinking, Karen?
So I know that the thinking last week was just to match it with what we already was passed on the ballot last year. Um, so that everything aligns, we're adding the mayor's position this year. And we're making the partial terms match up with everything that's already been voted on, so that was the thinking last week.
Chris?
I think it should be something that the individual that's looking to fill that vacancy, there, you know, it's part of. The information that they'll receive probably if they consider it. And if it's problematic, then it's thirteen months to the next election and you get a full term. Uh, timing doesn't always work out for elected officials, it's just. It is what it is, so instead of trying to length it and think about what they may do or may not be able to do. In terms of executive positions. Should come down to the individual that's running, is this the right time to fill a vacancy versus. You're gearing up to run, just wait thirteen more months and you would have then go, you'd be going into the cycle of the next election.
I think it's less about the elected official and more about the representation for the city. That's how I'm viewing.
It is, but uh, uh, more in line with what Councilmember Sangren was saying, if it's, if your ambitions are.
No, what I mean is in line with what she's saying, is that it's not about the ambition of the individual, it's about supporting the city. And so if the city representation is gonna be shortened. Because of potential of the individual, is that what's best for the community, or should the city's representation, representation be a little bit longer potentially? Regardless of the ambition of the individual, because just because they wanna be in an executive position, doesn't mean they're going to be, so.
That was the example that was used, was it doesn't give them time.
There's no continuity if you only have thirteen months. It's not, it's not even fair to the word itself, because it, as you know, it takes, you've been on for two years going on now. So, or is it four? It goes fast, and that first year or so is just a learning curve, so. It's kinda like, well, then you just get one term and that's it, and you're right, if if that's what you choose to run for, but on the other side. You know, two years is is only two years and it's then six years at least instead of thirteen months or. But if everybody wants one year, then.
Justin?
Well, you know, I just wanna remind. Everybody listening that it's still, there's still election, if people get sick of a candidate, they can vote for somebody else. So I'm still, and the, so I still have the tendency towards this, let let's say fair approach where you. I I'm okay, I'm still okay with it not counting as a term at all. Now, I think that there are some good points being made about opportunities to. Serve the city that could be cut short if we just limited it to one year, so if we're just talking one year versus two year. Then I'm gonna tend to the side of two years, but I still believe that, you know, we're not, these aren't appointments here, if. People get sick, they 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 don't wanna have somebody serve for all those years, there's several opportunities to vote them out, so. You know, I I'm not too concerned at all with this.
Before the special election, when we appointed, that term was not counted towards term limits, no matter how long they served.
And now there's an additional opportunity to choose, right, there's another election, you can have another election. If if people are dissatisfied and or they say, you know what? This is enough time, you've got an election to to make the choice and and that choice can be made by the voters.
So the current proposal is one year, I know that was what consensus was two weeks ago, are we staying at one year, I'm hearing a couple of people interested in two years. Or none?
I'm fine with that, too.
Two years or none? Two years or none? Roberta?
Uh, out of the two, I'd rather have two years.
Two years, two years, Karen, your thoughts?
I personally think it needs to match what was voted on by the voters, so I'll stick with one.
We have one, two, three, four, five, that say two is acceptable, six, that say two are acceptable. Two that prefer one, one prefers none, so it looks like consensus is for two. So I think that's what we will bring forward to the votes next time. Alright.
Alright, um. Again, this summarizes the non-substantive provisions, all these non-substantive revisions will go in one ballot question. And and again, it it, so you can read through this, but it'll, it will eliminate superfluous, obsolete, outdated, ambiguous language. Uh, it'll correct some legal citations, we're clarifying what the antinepotism provision means. Uh, and we're also giving council some room to delegate authority on intergovernmental agreements, revocable permits. Um, and we're clarifying a couple procedures on budget that is, that are consistent with how the budget is actually. Uh, prepared, there's some grammatical errors, some citations. We're conforming it to the law and we're not making any other substantive revisions in this main ballot question. Which is a cleanup ballot question of our charter, so that it is more readable, it cites to the correct law. And we can understand some of the provisions that were not cleanly written in general. With that, uh, this is the rewrite, I talked about this last time of the anti-nepotism provision. Uh, again, it wasn't clear that spouses of elected officials or city managers could not be. Uh, hired under this provision, so that's the clarification there, it. It was pretty clear on all the other family members, but as it was written, it was not um, a clear uh, statement. And then uh, on contracts and on revocable permits. So on intergovernmental agreements, we would like council to be able to delegate some of this authority, and as I explained last time, this is not on major projects. We'll bring major intergovernmental agreements forward, so council knows and can decide about where we will cooperate with governments. But sometimes there are um, other agreements that are um, minor to the major agreement. Uh, things like hiring consultants, easements, et cetera, where we'd like to have council, and you can separately consider this. Uh, now, um, be able to delegate that to the city manager or the appropriate um, employee. And likewise with revocable permits, these are temporary use of property. Uh, we'd like council to be able to delegate this authority uh, to a designate so that. Uh, the people and the professionals in the field can decide uh, where these. Where use of our property should be permitted for how long and give us the right to absolutely revoke it. So, again, both if these pass as ballot questions that allow council to delegate these authorities. We would still come back to you with ordinances on this and explain to council in detail. Where we would like this authority delegated, so you don't have to use this authority, but it would be very nice if it was added to the charter. So that, um, you know, employees can more routinely conduct business in the field and on minor intergovernmental. Does that make sense on that one? So we don't have to use the authority, you don't have to use it, but it's there. So, uh, we're taking more routine stuff administratively.
Okay, no objections?
Alright, so this can uh, come back on first reading these ordinances as early as July twenty-second council meeting. Um, and I would like to know if on that, council would like me to go through the cleanup. Provisions in detail on the record.
I think that would be helpful.
Versus summarizing as we've done the last couple times. I'll summarize and then I'll kind of quickly show where these types of of cleanup provisions. Are in the document on the screen, is that what's preferred, is to go through that cleanup bill?
How much transparency, I think that would be very helpful.
I think that's right, too, good, alright, thank you for that. Alright, well, I have direction and um, these will be coming up on first reading.
Alright, let's talk about the Fourth of July.
Thank you, so we have staff here from both the police department and from the fire department. Will be very brief, we uh, tried to be a bit more intentional to, to like to. Help you and the community to know what to expect from an education enforcement perspective before the Fourth of July, happy. Everybody, thanks for helping and celebrate, and we did want to touch back in in terms of. What we experience as a community and allow an opportunity for some debriefing of those staff and and you feedback. That you have as elected officials and what you heard in the community, so pass it off to Chief Parry.
Yeah, Chris, you said, Louis Parry and Chief Parry, uh, first of all, Fourth of July, it's over. Uh, we made it through it, uh, but we'll uh, move through this presentation fairly quickly. Uh, for the essence of time, uh, for the upcoming, uh, next slide. Alright, so. A couple of things that we did this year that we haven't done in the past, so. Our crime analysts took the top ten historical high report areas for illegal fireworks in advance of the holiday. Our community liaison officers visited those neighborhoods to try and identify. Uh, particular residents that have a history of shooting off fireworks. Uh, we visited those locations if we could identify them. Uh, educated the residents there about the use of illegal fireworks, uh, gave them warnings that if they did get caught, they would be cited. Six of the top ten locations this year dropped off that list. And so part of that was our proactive efforts in in going out there and identifying that upfront and giving them some education about. Uh, we coordinated with the fire department, so we sent out public service announcements to let our residents know that. Um, encouraged them to voluntarily surrender any illegal fireworks to at any of the fire stations, so they could come in and turn those in. And then the police department uh, used fire station number one in the IMC to drop off any illegal fireworks that we confiscated as well. Uh, so we uh, ran a lot of public awareness campaigns this year, so on June twentieth, starting with the signage boards. Uh, that most of, you know, you probably saw at the entrances to the city, notifying everybody of illegal fireworks. So those strategic messaging at the entry points, uh, the public and information officer. Um, worked on public service announcements that went out. To educate the public and deter that illegal behavior. So, one of the videos that we created as a public service announcement was. Um, we put officers out, starting on June twentieth, in unmarked police cars. Um, and I'll talk about that in a minute, but one of those nights, our PIO rode with an officer. Um, who was successful in identifying somebody lighting off illegal fireworks. Um, that person was issued a summons, uh, we created a video. To put out on social media, so everybody knew what the consequences were and the dangers associated with illegal fireworks. As you can see up here, our Facebook views were twenty-four thousand views, five hundred and forty-six interactions. Um, and then the rest of the social media interactions and views that we got on that video, so a lot of. Uh, public interaction through our social media about that educational video. Uh, some more social media interaction, so twenty-eight interactions, a hundred and three interactions and sixteen interactions. Based on uh, these public service announcements that we put out through our public information office. About fireworks in the Fourth of July. And so our enhanced enforcement efforts this year, um, we put officers out. Uh, in unmarked patrol vehicles to try and catch more people this year lighting off illegal fireworks. Uh, it is difficult to catch people in the acts because. You know, as you know, they go out, they light the fuse, they go to the sidewalk, if they see a car come down the street, everybody just kinda stands there or scatters. So for us to try and identify individuals lighting off fireworks, it does become a difficult endeavor. Um, but we thought with the use of unmarked cars, we gave some specialized training to those officers that were gonna be out in those cars. To try and increase our efforts in that, and then those ten hotspots from before were a focus of enforcement as well. Um, that they went out and uh, focused on. We did confiscate several fireworks, here's a picture of just a few of those confiscations. So you can see there was some large mortar type of fireworks that we did confiscate during the holiday. So, the breakdown between July third and July sixth, our total calls for service, so this includes every call that we responded to. Was two thousand one hundred and sixty-eight calls over that three-day period. So three hundred and twenty-two of those calls or fourteen percent were fireworks related. Um, sixty-one percent of all of our fireworks calls during that three days occurred on the Fourth of July. Um, thirteen percent of those calls for fireworks, we did not respond to, and that is for various reasons. Either we had to um, go to something uh, more priority, break off that call. People were calling in and we had complainants maybe not willing to give information or sign, uh, so various reasons why that we didn't go to those forty-four. Calls, um, and then we issued uh, over that three-day period, five summonses for illegal fireworks. Uh, just an interesting note on the summons that's issued, I saw a uh, a news story from Fox thirty-one yesterday, and I don't know if any of you saw it. Uh, the city of Denver over this uh, same period this year wrote six summonses for illegal fireworks. Uh, for all the city and county of Denver, so. Uh, to kind of put it in a little bit of perspective of us against uh, Denver anyway. Um, so there's kind of the breakdown of the fireworks uh, calls that we did respond to and the ones that we didn't respond to. I'll have uh, Stephanie talk about this a little bit. These are four fires. Um, we did. Find one additional fire um, related to fireworks, but these are four fires that occurred between the fourth and the sixth. Um, that were suspected or presumed to be the cause from fireworks.
So as you see in the one, Stephanie, my brain going by. As you see from uh, what he's gotten up here, we have most majority of those fireworks dealing with vegetation, brush fires, dinner fireworks. And the the one additional that she uh, that Commander brought up is that we did have a vehicle fire involving fireworks. And we, they've, those people involved in that were cited, so we did um, find out or have the individuals. Who caused that fire to that uh, that vehicle. Uh, one of the things as far as what fire department, what we did was to prepare ourselves for our possible initial calls. We went ahead and staffed an additional engine, brush truck. Med unit um, as well as a uh, an additional SAM supervisor, medical supervisor. For the frequency of the event, so we can. Keep eyes on the event as well as handle any additional calls that may occur around us. So with the file for the Fourth of July, we had about, we ran sixty-six calls. And those even including those reserve, those additional units that we put in service, they responded to uh, fire calls that we had as well. So we're very well utilized. But looking at that as well as all the information that was put out, we did have a reduction in calls from last year. Involving fireworks, which was a phenomenal thing to have. For that weekend, we ran a total of a hundred and fifty-six calls. In Thornton for the firework weekend. And again, that's still less than the total three days that we evaluated for last year as well, so. Um, this is definitely a decline, um, a decline in calls and continued work that fire piece are. Good at working.
That's right. Uh, here's some of the feedback um, that we received through social media about our efforts this year. Uh, and then just a little bit about the Fourth of July event itself. Um, during the event this year, um. Different from years past, we did a public service announcement and we offered bracelets. Uh, we encouraged parents to fill out a bracelet with their child's name and their telephone number on it. And wear that during the event in case they did become separated from a parent. Uh, if we found them, it would be much easier for the date, uh, the parent and quicker. So. Uh, we only had seven missing children during our Fourth of July event, one twice. So we call that a missing parent at that point. Uh, but uh, all of those children were reunited with family members within about ten minutes or less. Of them actually becoming lost at the event. Uh, there were a couple of minor disturbances. Uh, one juvenile was uh, lit a firework and threw it into the crowd. We contacted that person. He was arrested and issued a summons for that illegal fireworks. And we had one D U Y at a hundred and twelfth in Colorado, uh, after the event was over as they were leaving. Uh, they were pulled over and found to be D U Y. Um, so some minor disturbances, but other than that, a very successful event this year. Uh, the weather cooperated, so. Uh, not a lot of issues there. Questions?
Well, thank you all for all your work on all this. Um, I live right up the street from Carpenter, so. I know it gets pretty frisky and uh. I, it, it was really cool to see the little command center stuff we have set up in the rec center and. Um, just all the attention to detail to keep it safe. So really appreciate that. And um, I think there has been some. It's definitely been a, it was a better year, I thought, this year than last year in in my neighborhood as far as like the random fireworks. Um, that being said, a lot of folks are still really concerned about. The abundance of firework usage. Um, specifically my neighbors to the north, like in Ward Three, I've heard some. You know, friends and family that live up there really concerned with just. People going berserk up there with fireworks still to this night, probably right now. Um, that being said. I've had a few folks ask um, about other ordinances and I wasn't sure if like we could. Possibly talk about this in a future planning session. But um, maybe looking at. Um. And we, you know, we did a task force, which is great, and I think that's probably. You know, a lot of what helped out this year, but having maybe some things around um, ordinances where. The property owner is issued a summons as opposed to the individual. Um. And then. Having a reporting system, so maybe if there's a way to report on the My Thornton app.
So there was a way to report text to nine one one, and then I believe there was also a way to report through the website this year.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, we could add or look at those potentials for the app for next year.
Yeah, and I don't know if if we could get like agreement to like have a look at ordinances to make it so. The property owners, cuz I know some other cities throughout the country are doing that. And um, I mean, cuz like five. Five tickets for the amount of illegal fireworks being, I know, I know it's difficult and it's. Y'all are following the law and giving people summons based on what you can. But if we can tighten up the ordinance that way. We can have this, I mean, this is obvious, obviously a situation where you have to use a stick and not a carrot, right? Um, so if we can make the stick bigger with a better ordinance.
Can you explain the property owner piece? I'm not understanding why.
Yeah, so it would be like if like. And again, like this would be something we'd have to have like staff look into, but um. Orange County has ordinances allowing citations to be issued to the property owner, not just the person lighting the fireworks. This social hor- host ordinance allows for more effective enforcement when the activity is clearly happening on a specific property. Even if the individual can't be caught in the act. So like, if it's right in front of the house.
You say Orange County, which which form?
I think it's California. I believe. I have a link I can send you.
Yes, ma'am.
If there's broader interest, we can certainly just do a review of best practices and put your back and report.
Um, that might be better. I also heard a lot of frustration from residents about the lack of enforcement. And I guess the statement you made earlier about how you have to see them light the fuse. Cuz uh, one of my neighbors said they saw a police officer drive through the neighborhood. And their neighbors were lighting him off in the street and the officer waved at him and kept going. So that for level of frustration increased because of it. And I didn't know that to be able to say, well, if they didn't see him like the fuse, they can't write a ticket, but. I can understand their frustration, especially for that.
Uh, and I think there's always room for improvement here. So we're always looking at, you know. I think we did better than last year, uh, right? But that doesn't mean we're, it's perfect. So we'll always continue to look at those. Uh, other ways to to help enforce around this holiday. And I, please encourage your neighbors to continue to call because our fireworks cars are out through tonight. Um, so we even do them through the, I think, the ninth this year. Um, they're out still looking for those violations, so. Absolutely.
We're happy to to follow up and see if there are any. Uh, best practices in terms of regulations and enforcement and bring a report back in in time for consideration for next year.
Or for New Year's. Is everybody okay with that?
I can send that, I can send the links from this to. Send it to you, the email that has a bunch of links.
That's great.
That was it. Thank you very much. All right, we do have two executive sessions and we have about fifteen minutes left. How likely are we to be able to get through one of these?
I I do believe your your first uh, executive session. At sea is relatively straightforward, so I I do think.
We should go ahead and move forward then.
I think we can move quickly.
Okay, so um, for logistics, I'll call to order the special meeting. We'll go into executive session, we'll recess the special meeting, go out to the regular meeting and then come back to the special meeting. So I called order the special meeting of the city council. Can I please get a roll call? Here. You can hear. Thank you. Before I ask for a motion to enter executive session, can I get a purpose, please, for both executive sessions?
Uh, yes, the purpose of this is to talk to representatives of economic development about a proposed incentive agreement between the city and. B R C Big C O J V one L L C for employment development at a hundred and twenty-six. Hundred and twenty-six in Washington.
Are there any questions about that one? And the motion to that one?
And the motion would be a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Colorado revised statutes twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four, E. To determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. Develop strategy for negotiations and instruct negotiators regarding the potential amendment to extend. It's an amendment to extend. The term of an existing incentive agreement between the city and B R C Big C O J V one. L L C for employment development at a hundred and twenty-six in Washington and instruct negotiators. Regarding a potential tenant incentive agreement to bring approximately a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty primary employment positions. To the same business park development at a hundred and twenty-six in Washington.
Can I get a motion to that?
I'll make a motion as stated.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes. Any opposed, please say no. All right, and the purpose of the second one?
Purpose of the second one is for you to do a mid-year check-in and performance review with your appointed uh, appointees. The municipal judge, the city manager and the city attorney.
Are there any questions? Can I get a motion?
Yeah, the motion for that one would be a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Colorado revised statutes twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four, F. To discuss personnel matters related to the mid-year appointee performance evaluations.
I get a motion? Thank you, and a second? Or let me just pick who you want for that one. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed, please say no. All right, we will move to executive session and Mayor Portem will log off and we'll see you in chambers in a few minutes.